Let's go to public comment. Do we have anybody online?
A lot of seats up here, team. I feel like um the complication everybody sits in the back.
And I feel like that was um a very well phrased suggestion.
That's my seat, that's my seat.
Who would thought it jumped on your way, you know?
Yeah, it's power up there.
Did anybody see Dan Brown's bit checking behind his forehead?
I think those uncomfortable chairs got there.
Bradwell doesn't have a hat.
Well, that is pretty intense.
I'm hearing.
They know, do they know? They don't know it's Dr. Brown's birthday? Oh!
Everybody. Have your birthday, Dr. Brown.
You're a Virgo, hi!
Virgo, you can't tell? I'm a Virgo?
It's amazing to turn thirty-six twice, it's pretty fantastic.
Good man.
Uh, I know folks had a chance, well, again, minutes do we have?
Uh, I had a chance to look at them. Uh, they've got, because there's a transcript, there are some body and I started to even suggest uh making some changes. One where uh um where I'm quoted or transcribed to say something about the student conduct being respective and silly. It was supposed to be respectful and civil. But then as I continued with the twenty-one pages, I'm like, it's not worth it to try to figure out what uh yeah, so they're okay such as they are.
I am just looking through these now.
Yeah, I think we we obviously have the disclaimer there for a reason, right?
Yes.
So there, goodbye me.
Okay, yep. I remember seeing these things.
And maybe we can add in the minutes for our next policy committee that we continue to ask people to read the minutes with the noted disclaimer. All right, let's go to the fun item, four point one.
Oh, that's election chair person.
Okay, well, I think how about I nominate Pat Losas.
I guess I have to because I need to do it.
Well, I'm not gonna, we can have that conversation.
You're going to be so busy.
Indeed, and I'm not gonna back away from policy, so.
Honestly, you have shared policy since before I was on the board and you know these policies like the back of your hand, so but how much extra work would it be for you?
So, if this was the will of the committee, I would be willing to try to serve in this position if it was too much, then we could have a conversation again. What I'm what I'm already realizing is I'm already in conversation with the exec team, with our lawyers. So for me, it's not gonna be that much additional work, it's gonna be, it may actually simplify the work if that makes sense, but
I
but I also don't wanna read, I don't wanna push myself in a position as well.
I will respectfully decline the nomination as of now, but be willing to take up the mantle if and when called upon to do so. Because I I honestly think it would take me so much time to learn. I'd have to sit down with you and learn what you would need and it would, it might be more time to shift it over than it would to keep things the way they are.
Pat, because we have this disclaimer in our minutes, can we ask you to rephrase that or say it again so we have a duplicate that you'd be willing to serve? If it went cold.
Um, I hear so stated that that if this becomes too much for Dr. Eversley Bradwell, I will step into the fray.
Okay.
So I nominate Sean Eversley Bradwell to continue as chair of the policy committee.
Until such time as he collapses. Second.
Here's to longevity and good health.
All in favor? Okay, thank you, Sean.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you so much.
And I do expect us if um to be a little bit more um team oriented, so I'll be sharing as much information as possible as we proceed um with some of these policies and today would be a good example of that. Um, we have had some conversations with the exec team about a couple of these policies. The first policy that's on the agenda is extremely important, one because it comes with some federal mandates around training and um communication, but I will sit back for a second because I know that uh we have folks who have been intimately involved with this work and if it works for you, Amanda, pass it to you about the work that you've been doing on this policy in particular.
Absolutely. Uh, so thank you all for allowing me to talk about the Dignity Act, which really is the um representative policy in zero one one five and zero one one five R, right? So if you were to look at the policy that was crafted in twenty fourteen, which at that time I was probably working consulting with the district on that and you had a team here in the district that wrote this, there's a lot of redundancy with the zero one one five and then the zero one one five R. And so since I also tuned in to policy for a long time and learned a lot from Dr. Eversley Bradwell, that's not the intention of an R versus just the policy itself. And I always remember that the policy itself should really just be sort of like, you know, like this is this is the the board stewardship of the law and then how do we do it, right, is the R. Um, so we'll start with zero one one five and so what I did, what you what you see here in the packet is really taking some of the language that was there and some new language that I felt was important from the law, the Dignity Act itself, and just incorporated it. And then for zero one one five R, all that I tackled for tonight was the definitions and I think that was, you know, enough in terms of the agenda and then we can continue on with R, there's a lot more work to be done. Um, so you know, so essentially that that first part, the zero one one five, you're now down to three paragraphs, right? Um, and there is a mention of the Code of Conduct, which is really where we would want to drive folks uh because the Dignity Act should be embedded in that, sexual harassment should be embedded in that, right? Um, and then what are our terms that we're dealing with um when we have them here? And so my one question that I had when I was doing this was, do we need more definitions? Do people understand gender expression? Do they understand gender identity? Is there an expectation for people to actually go and find those out um and in in the law itself or do we wanna have a one-stop shop for that? So that was really, as I was doing the work, my lingering question and then just open for editing um because this is a draft.
So just so we're all on the same page, the um zero one one five, we listed as student harassment and bullet prevention intervention. I believe that was probably language for a more pad that was probably given to us by this book.
I think so and I think looking over the transcript, I think we talked about this la- the last meeting and somebody said that for reasons, some reasons um that it's best to keep this title, but I
Yeah, I think it was to help caregiver students, teachers to be able to find the policy.
Yeah.
Um, but before we get to the definitions, any thoughts about just the policy and the framing of the, for lack of a word, the theory, right, the grounding, before we get to what the regulations actually say?
So are you asking about the the language in the in the policy?
In the rewrite, which
Okay, so and that's what we have in hard copy in front of us.
Yes, and as an attachment as well on.
In the first paragraph, we gotta get rid of comma. It's all, um, so in the sentence beginning, both a student's ability to learn and thrive and a school's ability to educate and empower, no comma after empower.
And the policy committee of twenty-two, twenty-three is off to a rapid start.
Elimination. And then I would say then the the language gets a little bit um garbled in the next, in the sentence that begins therefore. So, the board will strive to create an environment that will foster civility in the schools to prevent and prohibit conduct, which is inconsistent with the Ithaca City School District's educational mission. So it's foster civility in the school. Okay, we wanna create an environment, but there's something that doesn't quite add up with what with to prevent and prohib- prohibit prohibit conduct. So fostering civility could prevent conduct, but it can't prohibit conduct.
Or do we wanna say foster civility in the schools and prevent and prohibit, are we to prevent or prohibit?
We wanted to vote. So I think that it's more important to
Foster civility in the schools, comma, and to prevent and and prevent and prohibit conduct. Yet to prevent prohibit conduct is not what we're going to do to strive, we're not gonna strive to create an environment to prevent and prohibit conduct, that's
No, we'll foster civility and civility can prevent this kind of conduct, but it can't, civility doesn't prohibit it.
But we
An environment of civility.
Yeah, we, I think we have to decide what what the board means here. Whether we're, are we going, are we going to talk about are are we going to talk about prohibiting conduct and
So in that same sentence, before we get there, I can, is it okay with everyone that we say therefore in accordance with the Dignity for All Students Act parentheses DASSA, because I think that's how the number folks know it, is that okay, that we start there?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then go on to the board and write, I'm wondering, are, is there a legal mandate for us to say that we prohibit conduct? Is that required by law?
I don't know whether in this, because things are prohibited in the Code of Conduct and the title of this is prevention and intervention. So I think we can get rid of prohibit.
So it ain't the, to delete the and prohibit.
Right.
So our goal here would be to prevent conduct, which is inconsistent with the ICAS DHP commission.
Yeah. How about Ken's end?
Pat.
I'm all right with it, but we're fostering civility in the schools to do more than prevent con- conduct, which is inconsistent.
So maybe to, and create an environment that will will strive to end
I would say
Maybe stick an and.
Foster civility in the schools and prevent conduct and prevent conduct, which is inconsistent with the Ithaca City School District's educational mission.
That would work too.
I think I missed that, I apologize, say it almost like that.
I'm just suggesting changing to to and, it will foster civility in the schools and prevent conduct, which is inconsistent with the Ithaca City School District's educational mission.
So to create an environment, foster civility and work to prevent conduct, is that what I'm understanding?
And, yeah, or that will foster civility in the schools and prevent conduct.
I think we need this to then, here's another suggestion maybe.
Understood.
Okay, the board will strive to create an environment that will foster civility in the schools in order to prevent conduct, which is inconsistent with the Ithaca City School District's educational mission.
That works for me.
Well, I was told that instead of raising my hand, I could just um
And I'm keeping somewhat track, somebody's changed this law, Tricia, to make sure we capture them.
Okay.
Karen, yeah, I see you, your hand up.
Yes. Yeah, so I was told instead of raising my hand, I could speak out just in case.
Hold on Karen, we can't hear you, one second.
Why am I not?
Whoever is controlled, yeah, we can hear you now, Karen.
Oh, okay, all right, so I would recommend instead of like a double negative somewhat and foster civility in the schools consistent with the Ithaca City School District's educational mission.
Ooh.
Can I offer a Karen, you're gonna love Policy Committee.
I'm a visitor.
But how about, and let me, folks, let me know what the idea is, right? So the board will strive to create an environment that will foster civility in the schools. Can we say in order to promote conduct, which is consistent?
Yeah.
Is that still aligned with what you were thinking, Karen, I just want?
Uh, but you're just saying foster civility in the schools consistent with the Ithaca City School District's educational mission, that kind of simplifies it, we're not talking about preventing anything.
Okay, I'm good. Right, and we've been trying to take out some language in our work anyway. So to make sure I've got it correct. Therefore, in accordance with the Dignity for All Students Act parentheses DASSA, Education Law Article Two, the board will strive to create an environment that will foster civility in in the schools consistent with the Ithaca City School District's educational mission.
That's, I think that's a very elegant simplification, thank you. I have another policy person here.
Keep going. Do we wanna read through the paragraph or we? To protect the rights of all students and groups for a safe and secure learning environment, the Board of Education requires a school culture that is free from all forms of aggression and violence, including bullying, cyberbullying, discrimination, hazing and harassment of students based on actual or perceived race, color, weight, national origin, ethnic group, religion, religious practice, disability, sexual orientation, gender, including gender identity expression, sex or other classifications by school employees or students on school property and at school-sponsored activities, programs and events that take place at any location, all school property.
That is all DASSA, I will tell you that.
That's all right.
And it's closed for data, right?
Right, that is like the, if you had to boil the policy in the one sentence, that's all from there.
Yeah.
And it's clunky.
It's clunky. Yeah. It's the or other classifications by school employees, that's really clunky. I, it would be better, I think, actually, if you put a comma after or other classifications. Though I couldn't actually cite a rule.
No, right, so it's your point, so and and again, I'm just, the only time in that I have here is, this is a student-centric law, right? That if violated by other students or by any adults, right, and employees that work for the district, whether they're contractors or not, that's the essence, right, so, right, so student-centric and then violated by students or employees.
Right.
I think we just, we just leave it, it's a, it's just a clunky sentence, it's it's long.
Okay.
Um, we also have time, right, even if we go through our first reading and second reading, so if we find something different, we can outline that. All administrators, faculty, staff, parents, caregivers, families, volunteers, contractors and students are expected to demonstrate behavior that is respectful and civil and refuse to tolerate bullying, cyberbullying, discrimination, hazing and harassments. Where's the missing comma, Pat and Mora?
After civil?
No. No, 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 not a compound.
Keep it moving?
Yes.
Fantastic. Further, any act of discrimination or harassment outside of school-sponsored events where such acts would create would create or likely create a risk of substantial disruption within the school environment where foreseeable that the conduct, threats, intimidation or abuse may reach school property may be subject to consequences as outlined in the Code of Conduct. So I mentioned this is trying to, this is probably straight DASSA language too, right, trying to
Also will hold indifference, right, so if you know about it or you should have known about it, right, because it gets at that law piece as well, right? Because under the Dignity Act, if you have a, if you should have known about this, right, it was foreseeable. Um, that's, we wanna capture that in this policy as well.
Okay, yep.
And I hate the term substantial disruption because it leads to the who and the how and the why and the definition, right? But that is part of the definition.
And this is probably the example of us having things to do with, an an example would be social media, right?
Absolutely, right.
Things that take place outside of the class, but from those income inside the school building.
Absolutely, they do not mainly package these things, right, it is, it just doesn't get filled enough.
Karen, any thoughts, comments on your end?
No.
Great, Pat and Mora?
Sounds good.
All right, so this is the easy part, right, it's the policy and we'll leave it for the time being. The more difficult part, I think the question, if I heard correctly from Amanda, was the definitions, do we wanna list out the definition, should we list up the definitions? We've had a sort of a common practice of referencing law or legislation, so our policy didn't have to change as much if the law or legislation changed. At the same point in time, we know it may be helpful and informative for some folks. I don't believe, we didn't identify or all these in the glossary, the glossary of the Code of Conduct is a little different than this.
Yeah.
Because I would love to see what the definition is of color, of color.
Uh, we do have harassment and bullying.
We should probably make sure that those definitions align with these definitions, right?
You're right.
My friends?
And I imagine, Amanda, these definitions you pulled here are from the DASSA Act?
Yeah, so um, a lot of them are defined in the DASSA uh law itself. Cyberbullying is one of those though that they did not really go into, so that's actually from uh, I think it's uh the Institute on Cyberbullying, Samir Hidjouja's work out of Florida. Um, and he he really, I think, leads with some of the best work there. But the harassment definition is essentially the threshold for Dignity Act violation. Bullying is a form of harassment, but we separate that out because families, I believe, really need to understand what that means, right, there is a uniqueness to bullying. Um, and that's defined there. And then we chose to include hazing as well. Um, and so I incorporated that definition and um again, I think that was out of I think there's a gentleman named Hank Muir who was like the, kind of the, the person who is the hazing kind of expert and that was a definition that I found um on a lot of his materials. And then obviously discrimination came along.
So what's missing in the draft that we see here about going back to zero one one five is that we have um cross-referenced the host of um laws and court cases. Um, and so that will make sure we include in the updated version as well.
And Kate may have newer cases, Sean, I think that's one thing that we might wanna, you know,
Yep.
check with her to make sure our list is the the most recent.
Yep.
And also if um there are, if there have been cases around gender expression or gender identity, that's um some some newer um materials that we would wanna include.
Yep. Right, and also means we'll have to change some of our cross, we'll have to look at some of our cross references as well, which include our policies. Yeah, Pat and Mora, thoughts about how best to proceed?
Well, okay, so what I'm seeing is the opening sentence of zero one one five R is this regulation accompanies board policy and outlines how the Ithaca City School District implements the required components of the Dignity for All Students Act, but we have nothing about implementation.
So for tonight's meeting, all we wanted to do was do the definitions because it is an enormous policy including prevention, intervention, selection of DASSA coordinators, trial those, the trainings, um response times. So I think in the, in, you know, we had an agenda that we wanted to sort of take this policy and break it apart over a couple of meetings just because it's so large.
Okay.
But I'll be prepared for that for the next time.
So
That's right, the first one would be, it's zero one one five, right?
Yeah.
You're right.
That's correct.
Um, but the quick, the answer or the question on the table, as I understand it, is do we want to just spell out in the glossary of terms, definitions for anything else beyond what is currently here, just in terms of the glossary? Right, discrimination, bullying, cyberbullying and harassment and hazing, that's what we've set out to define.
I can't think of anything, but you folks who actually have tried to apply this policy, is there anything else?
I think this really covers it.
And those those are the, those are the five behaviors that we refuse to tolerate and so I don't think we should add any more definitions to this policy.
They would clearly violate the Dignity Act.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then what we can expect at our October policy meeting would be the fuller actual regulation that is gonna apply to ICSD in terms of how we are supporting and being consistent with the DASSA. Thoughts, comments? Fantastic, so Tricia, for um our next policy meeting, I think when we send this to the board, we should send it not one at a time, but together. So for the next policy meeting, zero one one five, just to list it again so we can have it. And then zero one one five dash R, which is probably what will spend most of our time. I think the last one was probably seven or eight pages long, this will probably be similar as well, the regulation, just to give my board colleagues a heads up as well, so that will be a little bit longer for us to go through. We'll work with Amanda to get us a draft at some point in time till we have enough time to to go through. I'll reach out to Kate about if there's any other court cases, regulations, references, things that she needs. Um, I'd be curious to see what's out there as well, so we'll make sure that our current list, if you look at the policy of our current zero one one five, um, it's it's a pretty good long list of, you know, I think there's like fourteen, fifteen things that are listed here, so we'll go through that as well. Phenomenal, phenomenal, keep moving. Um, one of the greatest joys that we've been able to engage in for seventeen, eighteen, three, thirty years is the Code of Conduct. And so I don't know if this is Lily or Dan, do you, I don't know who's gonna provide us with an update or if you want me to provide an update, I'm happy to do, I am not happy to do so.
You tell him. Hey!
Yeah, let's do this.
All right, right?
Yeah.
All right.
Um, so just a little bit of context and then
Sure.
and you wanna
Yeah.
uh jump in, so uh twenty eighteen, we were doing some rewriting and thinking about the Code of Conduct and doing some shifting and then the board established the Code of Conduct Advisory Council in twenty nineteen. And we began meeting with students, staff from all unions and um community members and began to look at some examples, et cetera. Met regularly, March twenty twenty happened, the world stalled for a little while and then the Code of Conduct Advisory Council created an addendum to start with virtual or hybrid teaching and learning and then things picked back up again. Last summer, there was a pretty heavy-duty writing institute and series of sessions that folks engaged in together. Again, teachers, education support professionals, administrators, um, community members of Sean, Dr. Sean Eversley Bradwell and Dr. Anne Burns Thomas really headed the council
Yep.
um, and were very helpful and encouragingly looking things forward. Backs forward to the spring. Where
Yeah, 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 in the spring, uh we um, we did a number of listening uh sessions with the community, with teachers, um um, and um, we got a lot of feedback and what we did with
Caregivers and students
Thank you.
As well, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, caregivers and students, we get a lot of feedback. We get a lot of great feedback about uh the document, um Um, we incorporated a lot, we incorporated a lot of it. We, I think we actually incorporated all of it. And some of the feedback we got in the beginning was to pare down our language, to make it a little bit more succinct, um, to provide some examples. Um, some of the, and some of the interesting feedback was um, that does this apply to um, um, does this apply to my school in, in, in really um, specific um, examples of discipline? And we did a lot of explain, uh, explanation of that this is a framework. This is a pre-K through twelfth grade framework. And um, it, it, it kind of sets the tone. And schools' handbooks would then kind of provide more of the details. Uh, we also provided examples of restorative practices, included circle processes, uh, community schools service. Um, Lily did a nice job of including Dr. Maisha Wynn's work and grounding it in Howard, uh, how do I say it wrong? Zare, Howard Zare's work as well, uh, grounding it in really great academic pedagogy. And then um, in some of the listening sessions, uh, we got really specific feedback about cell phone policy. So for that, we just wrote a cell phone policy. And in the, in the cell phone policy, we provided some examples and some possible best practices in classrooms like the phone, you know, an example of the phone tree or a teacher modeling. Um, uh, and I, I think for, you know, for me, some of the biggest takeaways was they wanted more examples, we, we provided a lot of them. Yeah.
The, the two things that I would add was um, spending a good deal of time of trying to think about the code of conduct not as a disciplinary book, right? Uh, we've spent a lot of time even on this policy talk, or our policy committee talking about just even the language of code of conduct is sort of a reference to penal code or this hints towards that. So it's all about sort of you do this and this happens. And our previous one had very specific and non-flexible from my perspective responses. If this happens, this is the result. And it gave no flexibility, no restorative practices, just sort of, it was punitive. That was the reason why it was created was from my respect, from one perspective to be punitive. So trying to rewrite that in a way that provided more examples of restorative practices, rightfully so. Our caregivers and teachers had questions about what does that mean? And you know, the theory is great, but when I'm in a classroom, what does this actually look like? And I think that's why folks wanted some examples, like, you know, I get it and I support it and I need a little more. So that was the idea about working with specific school handbooks as well. Providing a framework of what the Ithaca City School District believes. Um, and it does make some folks nervous, but anytime, or make some folks nervous, but anytime you have a pretty revolutionary change, that has to be expected. Um, there was also questions, uh, the second part I want to say, there was also a number of really good questions about um, readiness and professional development, right? So if we're going to engage in a new model of student uh, engagement, then how are we providing our teachers, our administrators, our staff with the tools and the skills and the resources to make this happen? So there was some amazing professional development and I don't know if that's something that you wanna speak to Mary about the summer that happened. And I will say, cause I want to, on the transcripts, um, that I really appreciated Lily Talkett's language of saying that this would be year zero um, or when we begin, it would be year zero, not year one, right? That we will, we're gonna, this is going to be a, a process that we're working. We're not expecting, you know, once the policy is passed, that, that's it and they're off, right? But we know that we have to build capacity to make that happen. So, did I capture that? Okay. And Mary, again, cause I think I want to on the transcript as well, could you just briefly tell us about some of the professional development work that happened this summer?
Absolutely. So the professional development work this summer really focused on, I would say that the groundwork and I appreciate the year zero, but just sustaining what we have been offering. So therapeutic crisis intervention in schools with de-escalation strategies. That was offered twice this summer as well as the diversity and inclusivity symposium, really focusing on educator identity work and instructional coaching cycles with Dr. Holly. So that culturally and linguistically responsive teaching practice that we started in our district in, in two thousand fourteen and have revisited continually. Those, that's the highlight reel for me. Um, and the anti-marginalization curriculum writing is the other um, professional development. We had two versions of that, a tune-up for teachers who participated in the last four years and wanted to continue. And then sessions for folks who were doing it for their first time.
And I'll also um, add onto that, we have just started, so very, very beginning stages of working with Dr. Maisha T. Wynn and Dr. Lawrence Torrey-Wynn. And Dr. Wynn, uh, Maisha is the author of Justice on Both Sides, which is um, an exceptional book and has garnered a great deal of praise and is really focused on restorative justice in schools using the sociopolitical context. So there are a number of pedagogical stances, everything from history matters to race matters to futures matter, to help everyone understand, kids and staff and, and the community alike, to really understand the context of what's occurring and the ways in which to engage in circle processes and restorative practices, using that as a foundation. Um, so it's not just a series of practices, it's really about mindset and, and then also practices. So for the next year, we're going to have uh, twenty-five educators and twenty-five students who will meet bi-monthly, independent of one another. They'll really go through the five pedagogical stances and communicate with one another, build relationships. And then at the very end of June, they're going to come together, all fifty, um, and engage in a four-day institute where they will learn all of the uh, restorative, uh, restorative justice practices, the circle practices in particular. Um, and then essentially be the trainers as we, as we move forward, right?
Is it possible that um, we can make that book available to board members that may wanna read it? Is that, is that doable?
Justice on Both Side?
Yes. Um, that's one thing. And then um, Lily, as you were saying that, it made me think about, oh, um, we should also, so all this is context to what we hope is moving forward. And so while there's no um, guaranteed schedule, uh, we know that we wanna start holding some additional listening sessions now that it's been rewritten. Um, if we were to, when we are to pass, let me remove if, when we are to pass a new code of conduct, it would require forty-five days notice for a public hearing. Um, so it will be a little bit different than our traditional, you know, policy procedure. Um, and we can make the current draft available to board members, um, to take a look at whenever we want. And we, um, I don't know if this, this draft isn't, but we are also working with folks to try to communicate some of this content visually. I think we had some of that conversation, right? So it's not just text, right? That it actually, um, it's a little bit more dynamic than that as well. And having conversations about how do we get it out of paper form, right? Maybe even the creation of videos down the line, what that may look like, but realizing that we need to change the, the model as well. So I think that's where we're at. Um, I hope that's where we're at. Uh, I will say that Dr. Burns-Thomas is on sabbatic, uh, go sabbatical this semester and has been kind to still meet, but I think also like, how about y'all give me a break? Um, which we're trying to do as well, respect that, that time. But um, so with that caveat, questions, uh, suggestions, concerns, reactions?
I, I have a question. Um, so I gather the draft that we currently have access to, which is from an old email I received in May or June, that doesn't have any of the updates that Dan and Lily spoke about.
No, I, we need to re-label. Um, and so I know, I think the draft is like June fifth or something like that, it says in the title, right?
July.
July, so exactly what I said. Uh, we need to make it like whatever the, the most recent date is. So Karen, my, I, I don't believe it is the same document though, the same link? No, it's not.
We started we started a separate document.
So Karen, we'll make sure that all board members have access to the updated versions.
Alright, thank you. And another question, um, Lily, when you mentioned about the students and educators working together, um, doing this bi-month, bi-weekly or is it bi-monthly meeting? Will the students get credit for it? What's their vested interest in participating in this?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question. One of the things that we've been trying to do is um, connect it to either work-based credit um, or to their English classes or we have been able to leverage through Mary's genius, um, grant monies to pay kids through the U.S. Bureau. So we have yet to totally nail that down, but um, those are the three possibilities that we've been exploring.
And my last question I just thought of, what is the likelihood that this will pass before the end of this calendar year? Or it'll go to vote or the forty-five day notice so that we don't go into twenty twenty-three with it?
Karen, I wanna make sure that we are on the same page. Do you mean this academic year or this calendar year?
No, calendar year. I know it'll get done within this academic year, but um,
Don't change the year.
By the end of this year, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Um, the reality is it may not matter when it gets done because legally it wouldn't be implemented till next school year anyway. Um, though we are already starting to do some of these processes, right? That the code of conduct is supposed to be revamped by, I wanna say before August fifteenth, I forget the actual date is. But, so the question becomes, are we gonna be doing these processes this school year? Is that really the question beyond the question?
No.
You wanna know if it's gonna be done by, by twenty twenty-four, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't, I will say I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know if my
I think we can do it, but I also don't wanna jinx that. But I really do think so. I'm optimistic. I'm cautiously optimistic. Karen?
And, and um, I know that I, I attended one of the community meetings and there was low attendance. And maybe it was due to, as we were winding down at the end of the school year and since it's going to, um, you're gonna reach out to have more meetings. Um, was there any blatant negative comments about it? Or were people receptive of the document?
Yes, and, right? There were some really strong feelings about the process and there were some really strong feelings that this is the exact direction we need to go with additional support. But in terms of the direct and negative feedback, I'll let Lily and Dan speak to it.
Yeah, I think the, some of the direct negative
Concerns brought the best which I can.
Sure, yes. Uh, concerns that folks brought up were that we're really around implementation, I would say, and concerns around the potential lack of support for in-class situations, the way that it was worded. There was less of a sense of we're all in this together and more of a sense of, um, this is strictly the responsibility of the educator or the educators who are within that classroom. Um, as opposed to, you know, hey, we're having a tough time, um, let's work on this together, right? So that was pretty significant. And then we had some concerns shared through the anonymous feedback form on, yeah, this all sounds great, but what happens when X violent thing occurs? Or some, something really, really challenging takes place, then what? Then how are we as a community going to, going to handle it? Um, and what kind of training and what time will uh, be accompanied with this, et cetera? So those were probably the largest themes.
Yeah, I'll reiterate that staffing and resources were one theme about how we get implementation. And there were both from the anonymous surveys and from the listening sessions that I participated in, folks who were advocating for a traditional form of punishment. Someone does something to someone on the playground, they need to be out of school for this amount of time, right? So that was communicated a couple of times in various forms. And so trying to work through that, I think is part of the, the reason why I hesitate to say about twenty twenty-three is that it's a community process and conversation that is necessary if we're going to be able to do this in a way that people feel like their voice was heard as well. And I do think the listening sessions really helped, even though some of them were really low attended. At least, you know, there was an active attempt to gather and seek out input as opposed to waiting for people to, you know, for us to come, them to come to us.
I just wondered, you know, the folks, and I've heard them for the last forty years, you know, who want the, the chart that says
Yes.
you do this, this is what happens.
Yeah.
That if we continue in the direction that we're going, they're not gonna get that and they're not gonna feel heard.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, and so part of what's, I think what Sean is talking about is ensuring there's a level of conversation. I mean, the development is almost as important as the document at times.
Oh, absolutely.
Because we were able, I was able to say, hey, let's talk about two different kids who have excessive tardies. One kid has just been skipping class, comes super late, um, you know, has things going on in their life, right? Um, and has not met with significant tragedy recently, et cetera, right? It's just like, I'm just engaged, I'm not interested. And then we have another student who has also been, uh, been excessively tardy and/or absent. Um, and that child has lost both parents within a year, right? These are two actual kids at Ithaca High School. And if we have a chart that says we do the exact same thing in both of those situations, I don't think I wanna work at that school district.
Yeah, so building flexibility also makes it more difficult and yet it's part of the process of being restorative. So that's what we're trying to do. And at the same point in time, make sure that we're still following, and I said, requirements and mandates and everything else, right? It's what we've been trying to, to work through. And I, and I would um, strongly recommend that folks read the cell phone policy. I sent a email to Dr. Brown earlier today. Some folks may have seen it in the NISBA eclipse. There are a increasing number of schools that are, for lack of a better term, locking up children's electronic devices during the school day. Um, most recently, there's a school outside of Buffalo that is requiring students to uh, put them in these uh, wonder bags. I believe they call they yonder bags, like, so they come in, they lock up their phone and then they give it back at the end of the day. Other schools that are requiring students to lock them, not just their cell phones, but their smartwatches, their tablets. Um, so it's a very, we're at a, I think, an interesting point. Um, particularly at a point in time where we're completely reliant on these same devices for instruction. Now people are, you know, where it seems like we continue to swing from one direction to another. I don't foresee us going in that direction at any point in time, but I know I'm also one-ninth of a board and I'm quite certain that that's not the direction that our superintendent would like to go.
Not at all.
I don't see us going in that direction.
I wouldn't mind saying to all the adults to protect them. And to have them focus on using it, helping kids use it, to take notes, to connect to the world, to analyze things, yeah. So yeah, I'd be open to a first policy, having adults stop and then their kids use them.
Yeah. So in this situation, I do quote Dr. Brown on a regular basis. So in this situation, I do quote Dr. Brown on a regular basis, reminding us that the pencil was a technological innovation. Right? And we're not, we're not taking those away. And so we may have to do some thinking as educators about what that looks like. So the cell phone policy and giving some examples of what folks can do, I think is key. And probably gonna be one of the biggest responses we get. I think the rewriting of the dress code policy was um, I mean, we didn't, we got much more of a sense about how archaic it was during COVID. Things like you can't come in with uh your face covered, like, you know, it literally said that in our policy, right? So some of those things, um, you know, we had to change by um necessity, but also it highlighted some other things. And so I think we'll get a bunch of feedback as well. I think it's uh well done. And I think as we need to remind our community that this is a continual work in progress. No matter what the hearing says or what gets passed, at any point in time, the board can choose and the district can choose to to edit things, right? To add things, to re- retake another look at things. And so I think that would be key for us to keep in mind that this is a continual ongoing process. This is not done once we take a look at it. So I think, I I'm certain that we have probably a meeting on our calendar somewhere that, Dan, if we do, I apologize. Uh, that we'll put together a schedule of what we think the rollout looks like in terms of getting us to a public hearing, when we can possibly see it in front of the board. Um, I have heard loud and clear from Karen that the, at least one board member wants it by twenty twenty-three. We'll keep that as part of the scheduling. Um, and we'll keep trying to move it forward. We do know that the start of the school year is gonna obviously slow things down for a minute, but this has been a priority for quite some time for those of us on the policy committee.
And and that reminds me, because this is a long been an issue. So traditionally, first day of school and first day of work, teachers hand out handbooks. And so is that happening? And are these handbooks consistent with where we are in the draft?
We should also make mention that um
No.
That uh, two years ago, I want to say Lily, it could come along. There was a rewrite of the current code of conduct.
Right.
That maintained its current form, but did shift some of the language to be much more restorative than it was previously.
Yes.
So we've already taken some of those steps and and that has been available and out there for, I want to say again, for at least a year and a half, two years, if I'm not mistaken. So are, is it consistent? We'll have to, that's a follow-up question for us to talk about in terms of our school, our building handbooks.
I just know, you know, years ago, and, you know, when I first came on the board, it was very clear to me, I saw examples that the handbooks were not consistent with the code conduct as it existed.
Yep. That would be something for us to explore with the understanding that then the code of conduct supersedes the building handbook.
Right.
So we'll have to work on that.
But it does.
Well, absolutely, absolutely.
When the high school is called a playbook, which was updated a few years ago.
And L A C S is called a footbook, but you know, we'll, we'll keep working with these and go from there. Yes, uh, so more to follow. Uh, hopefully, you know, we'll keep moving along and we look forward to people's um additions, questions, suggestions, recommendations, et cetera. Uh, and I will say again, just because I also wanted to transcript the work um that uh Dr. Wynn's had been doing is uh is the leading work in the field. So the fact that we've connected with them and doing some work is extremely impressive, so. Fantastic, fantastic. So to keep it moving, I know we have a few minutes left um before our special voting meeting. And this is about policy two, three, five, zero, boarding, board meeting procedures. This policy outlines the way in which our board meetings happen. We've been having some conversations sort of informally amongst a number of us about are there ways to make our board meetings um more efficient and productive is probably the best way I can characterize it. So what is included in the policy now is the current order of the agenda. And we just wanted to, not that we would make any move or maybe, I I don't know how we want to proceed, but we just wanted to sort of open up the conversation if there's things that we thought we can do. Uh, and as an example, uh, we know that we have folks that either for public comment or we have teachers and students coming to present. Um, sometimes we have executive sessions, sometimes we don't. So there's been some confusion about the time or even waiting for for young people to wait to seven o'clock to give their presentation, thinking that maybe those are things that we can put at the beginning of the meeting, whether we have an executive session or not. Um, but trying to make sure that folks know if there is, our educators are presenting to us or our students are presenting to us, that there can be a definitive time that they know that will happen. And then to let them rest, right, right, to to be at home. So those were some of the things that we were thinking about, but open floor, open conversation, how our folks may may think about it.
And there's also a question about the pledge of allegiance.
Yes. I, you know, it has been, we haven't said the pledge of allegiance at a meeting since uh before March thirteenth, twenty twenty, when uh when school shut down. And so though it has been on every agenda um for those two and a half years, uh, we haven't done it. I did a little research and didn't come up with anything that says that there's any requirement that we do it.
No legal requirement.
No legal requirement.
Pat's one, go ahead, Dr.
I was gonna say, uh, if anyone's looking for a soundbite, yeah, I did some research this weekend, because I got a question about why we do them in elementary schools and um why should we continue? And the only thing I could find and the only thing that's been written is that it's to promote patriotism in schools. That was the original intent and that's why it's still done. And I have, and out outside of that, there is no commonality or consensus ranging from any school person or any policy like you or any law, school law book.
Do any, do you know, sorry?
I thought, that I thought according to at law, we have to provide the opportunity in all of our schools for a pledge to be said. That's when I was doing this.
It's not required.
It's not required?
I didn't find where it was required.
I thought I did. And I do remember, uh, this is many, many years ago, but we were not doing it at Ithaca High School. And then we were cited by the state.
Yeah.
And then we started having it done over the um, the
Go, 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 go.
PA.
It doesn't, because we we uh, it may not be consistent still.
Right. I will, yeah.
So I think we have two questions. And for me, the question is not to engage what happens in our building during the school day at this time.
Yes. Yes.
Right, right.
The question is whether or not we continue doing it at a board meeting.
Right.
I would be interested if any other local governance of government, elected governance says the play, like, does common council do it?
Yeah.
Does the Tompkins County Legislature do it? What do other school boards do? I'm just curious. For me, that's just a, a, something I'm curious about, but it's something for us to research a little more to make sure we get definitive. I know it has made the news nationally for school districts. Um, and so that part, I I get, I think we could be worth us knowing a little bit more about it. Um, I also have some conversations about our board responses being listed on the agenda. Um, my perspective has been that it almost um mandates us to feel like we have to respond when there's a public comment. Um, I know there are other boards that are sometimes in a very good way, sometimes not so much in a good way, but clearly state that they will not engage in a board response until the following meeting. So they at least can gather information. But um sometimes I think our board responses gets us into a conversation that we are not able to do appropriately. Um, given either the lack of information, the um sensitivity of the what's being shared and asked to respond, personnel matters. You know, we could go down the line of various things. So the goal wouldn't be to stifle conversation, but what is the best way to engage in productive dialogue? And does, and does our current process do that as well?
I I was actually going to bring, bring up the issue of board responses because I think, you know, in the time that I have been on the board, the evolution of the board responses has changed the, not for better or worse, but has changed the tone of the meeting, but it's also raised expectations from the public that that's how you communicate with the board. You come to the board and you say something and you wait for the board to respond. And that's not the primary purpose of Board of Education meetings. The primary purpose is governments of the district. And I think especially, you know, um, depending on what individual personalities are on the board, the having the board responses uh scheduled in raises the expectation that many or all of us are supposed to respond to what's being done. I think, I mean, I think a lot of that was habit, you know, Rob was very much in the habit of saying, asking everyone if they have a response. I I'm of, I'm on the lesser side of responding, uh, other people been more. Um, and I think that that it 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 has cut down on the efficiency of our meetings. Taking us off into territories that we did not plan to go and were not prepared to go.
Right.
So I I would, I would be in favor of perhaps a larger dis- board discussion about whether we should just take out board responses.
Yeah.
So Pat, one idea for me about that would be, again, if we're looking at the entire agenda, so there is the superintendent's report and either before then or after then would be a board report that would be on the agenda. Doesn't mean we would have to use it, but it could be a way to respond to things that happened the prior meeting that were again, more informed as opposed to an expectation. And that would not replace committee reports or updates, right? That would be in addition to. So I think there are times where the board publicly has to respond to particular things that happen or give an update. That part I understand. But I think the expectation, as Pat's saying, of 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 back and forth dialogue um is not what board meetings are designed for. Um, and has, there are a number of times it's been eight forty-five then we, before we got to the business of the district.
Yep.
So.
And I think that that also impacts uh, you know, groups, especially student groups who have been brought in to see us. I I'm not, I'm not comfortable with the timing of starting a meeting, having little kids present something and then shutting that down for other people who might want to be for the board or or say things and then go off and and have an exec session. Uh, I I'd much rather be, find some way that we could communicate to people who were scheduled to come that, you know, it might be six or it might be seven, depending on whether we have an exec session. And then just be able to communicate to that to them a couple of days in advance. Or whenever we know we need an exec session. Because I think just starting a meeting with kids and then any adult who wants to address us has to wait an hour. I think that's, and you think the student reps, because the student reps don't come and sit here for an hour while we're in exec session.
Another option, if I may, um, and we did this in Virginia, I think we did it a couple of times here early on, is the exec session at the end of the meeting. At the very end of the meeting, um, is an option. That doesn't cause the kind of interruption that you're referring to now.
It doesn't?
Yeah, my, my only hesitation with that would be that there's sometimes the exec session is to clarify information that requires a vote. And it'd be uncomfortable to vote without the ability to have that clarifying question in an executive session.
Yep.
But yes, I understand that. And I am not advocating for this. And as I say to my students, please repeat this. I am not advocating this. But there are school districts across the state that do not have a public comment session on their agenda as well. It is not a, it is not a requirement. It is a board decision. And I would, I don't foresee us taking that off our agenda, but I want to make sure that that's known as well, that that's not required by law for us to have public comment at a board meeting. We can have other forums.
Correct. I'm just saying, the consent agenda is what we typically vote on to be, but there are other items on the agenda typically that are not voting items. Could the consent agenda be after an exec session at the very end of a meeting?
Yes, or after, or any voting issue that would require, that may require us to have a conversation in the exec session could be after all the other
Yeah.
things that we have, right? Superintendent's report, right? But that's something for us all to to discuss.
But then if we were, if we were voting and if we were gonna vote and we were going to discuss, we would be doing that in public and that would certainly dis, I mean, that would certainly discourage anyone who wants to see how we are discussing certain uh issues that would keep them up pretty late with a big, with a big gap in time. And maybe it could be that we, we could enter into a short exec session for anything that that would, that would that wasn't, that was going to, that we needed background information on for that night's vote. But a lot of exec session is legal.
Yeah.
You know, that that's not gonna ever come out in public and that's something that certainly could wait. And there, we could have more than one exec session, in other words.
Yes, and we've definitely done that over, well, we, for those of us who've been on the board for a long time, know that we've definitely had multiple exec sessions and meetings depending on what the issue has been.
Legal issues, personnel issues that that don't need to be solved in that at that moment, but are something that we need to be informed of.
Yep. Yeah, so I guess the idea would be to take a look at the agenda and see if there's, you know, we did get some suggestions from board members who took, who did look at it. Um, there are ways in which to move, for example, the consent agenda into after the superintendent's report. Right? So any voting item, um, we normally have said that we anticipate an exec session when we send out a agenda, so folks are aware. Um, you know, we can look at other models and continue to research other models as well. I'm just trying to think about, is again, is there a way to be more efficient and to, I think to Pat's point, to manage expectations about what can happen during a meeting which is designed to engage in the business of the board. And I know that this has changed pretty dramatically during COVID, like this is partly what happened. But we had far more opportunities to engage with community members pre-COVID, whether it be, you know, holding listening sessions at each individual schools, right? So we would have different conversations. But what's happened, I think, more recently has been a a different, a a different board meeting.
I'll quote you, Professor. Um, this is an irreconcilable truth. Is that it?
Sure.
Robert's rules of order was never written to enhance or to accept student or community votes. It was written and had been developed to exclude it. So you're trying to make it so that if community feels heard and public comment, well, we have a structure and a system and a policy that is written and designed back to.
For folks who may not remember, I tried diligently for us not to use Robert's rules, including buying board members books about not using Robert's rules. Uh, but yes, the whole purpose is to be exclusionary. And if you don't know what the practice is, I can shut down your voice simply by saying you're out of order.
Right.
Right, so.
Out of town.
Yep. So there, so there is a, so I don't know if this is worth us putting back on the agenda for us raising at a board meeting to have conversations with our board colleagues. I don't know what's the best way.
Yeah, I think we need to have a conversation with board colleagues. I would also say, you know, as long as this is our policy, uh, there's something that I don't think we're doing that follows this policy that the regular order of business may be changed at any meeting and for that meeting only by an affirmative vote of a majority and voting for the proposed change in the regular order of business. We, we don't. We do change the order and I don't recall ever voting on it.
That is, that is correct. We usually just sort of assume that there's a consensus whether that's been the case or not. We can be clear on that. And I also know um that there's some other items on the agenda that we need to be clear about as well. So if it works for the policy committee, we'll put it on it. Well, I'll work with Lily and Dr. Brown to see when is a good, if there is a good upcoming meeting that doesn't have thirty-five items on it already for an agenda.
No, we can do that. We can do that.
We'll find one and at least have the conversation and see how we feel it can work. Um, any objections to that? Fantastic. Uh, I would hopefully like to move particularly on the board responses sooner rather than later, so I don't know what that looks like. Or change expectations about what, when and what board responses should look like. I think that would be healthy for everybody involved. So we'll, we'll re-read some of them.
All right, yeah, I feel the same way.
Fantastic.
Yes, sooner rather than later.
All right. So for next board meeting, we'll keep for most part the same agenda items as we have here. And if we don't, you know, I don't know what else we need. And I know Amanda and I have been going back and forth. We may add a couple. Um, now I'm gonna put you on the spot, Amanda. A couple in the uh, to put, to put you on the spot, Amanda. A couple in the eight thousand series, there's a couple policies that I know we need to get to um from our uh, our audit. So we'll get, we'll get to those as well.
Sure, happy.
And those are um, just excuse me, in the six thousand series. And most of those are simple, changing the amount of money that, you know, needs to be reported, things of that nature. So they're not, they're not anything major there.
Right.
But they were recommended that we do, take a look at them too. All right, fantastic. If everyone's good, then we'll bring the meeting to close. We'll wait a minute and a half and see everybody at the special voting meeting. Karen, I don't know if that means you have to jump off this call and get back on another Zoom call. No, she's good, sorry. Tricia was quick on that one. Stay right here.